Okay, I called this meeting to order and welcome to our regular meeting of the York County School Board. We got to enjoy the sunshine finally for a whole day. We haven't seen that in a long time. I hope everybody enjoyed it. We're going to now ask our pledge leader, Mary Hots, fifth grade student at Bethel Manor Elementary, to step forward while I'll share some information about her. So Mary Hots is a fifth grade student at Dare Elementary School and now you're at Dare, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I think I had it written wrong at the top, so I apologize for that, Dare Elementary. So Mary began her elementary career at Dare as a first grade student and has been active in their school ever since. Mary has been a member of the SCA since her arrival at Dare and she served as the SCA class representative in first, second, and third grade, followed by SCA reporter in fourth grade, and she currently serves as SCA president. Mary is also part of the Chrome Club. Her teachers describe Mary as a motivated student and a good citizen. She is kind and caring to her classmates and strives to be her best, both academically and as a person. Mary is consistently on the honor roll and is regular on the good citizen list each marking period. Mary says she likes school and PE is her favorite subject because she likes being active. She also loves reading books and outside of school, Mary loves to go camping with her family and her hobbies include art, singing, and soccer. Her goal for this year is to get straight A's, but her bigger goal is to become a really good friend. Mary is an outstanding example of a Dare student and we're very proud of her hard work and her accomplishments. So please stand as Mary leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you, Mary. And next, we're going to move into our awards and recognitions. As a reminder during the break, we'll have an opportunity to take pictures of all the award recipients at the end when we break for a short few minutes so we can come down and meet and greet all the award recipients. I would like to introduce some scouts that are with us tonight. There are three Boy Scouts from Troop 200. Could they stand up? They still here? There they are. These gentlemen are working on their Citizenship to Community badge. Myself and Dr. Shandor met with them before the meeting and answered some of their questions. So thank you for coming out tonight and welcome. Thank you. Now, we're going to move into our Seniors of the Month and the following students are being recognized for their achievements and we have Bruton High School and Ms. Haywood.
Thank you very much and good evening, everyone. It is my honor to introduce to you the Senior of the Month for February from Bruton High School, Alexa Wilson. If Alexa will stand with parents Michael and Michelle Wilson. Fantastic. Bruton High School is pleased to honor Alexa Wilson as the February Senior of the Month. Alexa is a dedicated and compassionate student athlete. Alexa's dedication to Bruton has been impacted during her high school career. She has participated in several service organizations, including the Key Club, Student-Athlete Leadership Team, Senior Athlete Ambassador, Senior Class Treasurer, Fellowship of Christian Athletes, Prom Committee, and Panther Achievement Leaders. Additionally, she has mentored freshman students and participated in School of the Arts, the dance arts component. Alexa's ability to support other students demonstrates her desire to give back to her school community. Alexa has also been honored by earning the highest academic honors for all four years and also served in leadership positions in several honor societies, the Chemistry Honor Society, Mu Alpha Theta, and the National Honor Society. Alexa is an outstanding athlete. She has participated in volleyball and tennis. In volleyball, Alexa was named All-State, All-District, and All-Region. She enjoys volleyball and shares her passion for this sport with younger student athletes by serving as a volunteer coach in the community. Alexa has accepted an offer to play volleyball at Shawan University next year where she plans to major in finance and computer science. Please join me in congratulating Alexa Wilson as the Senior of the Month for February from Bruton High School.
Thank you. And now, we're going to move into Grafton High School and that's Allison Kenny. If she could stand up and you're here with your parents, everybody stand up. Yeah, there you go, whole family, perfect. So it's with great pleasure that Grafton High School recognizes Allison Kenny as February's Senior of the Month. Allison is an active student that exemplifies all of Grafton's attributes to include positive attitude, always acting with integrity, and acting as a leader both in and out of the building. Allison has been a member of Grafton's volleyball team for three years, member of the cross-country team in both indoor and outdoor track for the last four years, where she now serves as team captain. Allison's dedication to her academics is visible through her involvement with her many honor societies. She is a member of our Science Honor Society, our Math Honor Society, our French Honor Society, and the National Honor Society. Her leadership can be seen in these organizations as well as where she serves as Vice President for both the French Honor Society and the National Honor Society. Allison is also co-founder of one of the newest clubs, the Gardening Club. Allison also serves as the sports section editor for both our yearbook and the newspaper. Allison spends time volunteering outside of school where she has done work for the Peninsula Track Club, the French Market at Yorktown, participating in sock and coat drives and giving back to Grafton High School in various events. Allison also serves as soccer referee in her free time. I don't know if you have any free time, do you, too much? Allison has been on the All-A honor roll for four years of high school and she ranks in the top 10 of her class. She has taken 15 advanced and AP courses and holds a 4.61 GPA. Allison has been accepted to UVA, NC State, and George Mason and wants to pursue a career in the medical field dedicating her work to the biomedical engineering world. Allison's favorite memory while at Grafton High School was going to prom last year with many of her friends who were seniors. The biggest piece of advice Allison would give to current Grafton students would be to get involved. The clubs and sports that you participate in help you find lifelong friends and help create memories and help you have a lot of fun. We're so pleased to recognize Allison Kenny as our February Senior of the Month. Congratulations. All right, now we're going to move to Tab High School and Dr. George.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Richardson. It's my pleasure this evening to present the Senior of the Month from Tab High School, Zach Coldsnow. And I have to say, this young man I've known, he's a good friend of my son's and all those guys, those Young Life guys sort of hang out together and they all fondly refer to Zach as "The Package." And you're going to see why. Zach Coldsnow is an outstanding senior in every aspect of school life at Tab High School. He is an excellent student who has maintained a GPA of 4.43 while lettering in four varsity sports. Zach was named First Team, All-State, and Football this year. He is a defending state champion shot putter in both indoor track and outdoor track and is keenly anticipating his final varsity baseball season this spring. Zach has served as team captain in all of his sports. Zach serves as President of FBLA and is a student leader in Young Life. He is a member of the National Honor Society, Beta Club, Mu Alpha Theta, and Student Ambassadors. As part of career mentorship, Zach is completing a sophisticated internship at NASA. Despite a jam-packed schedule, Zach always seems to have time for anyone in need. He is a dedicated friend who takes the time to generously help others. Zach is outgoing and ready to pitch in anywhere that help is needed and he has the ability to recognize what needs to be done without being told. A natural leader who is widely respected among his peers, Zach does not carry himself above others. In fact, he has an act for paying close attention to the weakest among us. His generosity of spirit, constant good nature, and desire to achieve at the highest level all benefit Tab High School and its community. We proudly present Zach Coldsnow as the Tab High School Senior of the Month. Congratulations, Alexa.
All right, so Dr. Shandor, if you want to start heading down. I'm going to announce on that one. So our next Senior of the Month is unable to attend, but will be here in March and that's Noah Fields. I just want to make sure he's not here tonight still. So we've made some contact and he's going to be here next month, so you'll be able to read that one next month. Mr. Medford, thank you. So now, we're going to move into our Student Service Awards and Dr. Shandor is down front, so we're ready for that. And we're going to start with Mr. Medford. You have Coventry.
I have Coventry Elementary School for the Student Service Award for February. We're going to bring Peyton Short up and your principal, Dr. Gardner.
And bear with my voice tonight. The teachers at Coventry are proud to recommend Peyton Short as recipient of this year's Student Service Award. Peyton is a kind-hearted young lady who loves to extend a helping hand and is always seeking out ways to help others. Since Peyton's mother is a teacher at the school, she is at school earlier than most and uses that time to help everyone in the building. Before school, Peyton helps the cafeteria staff pass out breakfast bags to the classrooms. She always asks her teachers if she can help them before the bell rings. She arrives early to help log into the computers, set up the problem of the day, and check students' homework for completion. During class, she will ask if she can help students who are struggling or if the teacher needs any assistance with cleaning up or organizing materials. After school, she helps a third grade student with her homework. She will also help her teachers after school if they need help hanging posters in the hallway. Peyton is a shining example of a thoughtful student who extends a helping hand without being asked. In addition to being helpful at school, Peyton is a valued member of the community. As an active member of the local Girl Scout troop, Peyton has contributed to a number of community projects funded by the sale of Girl Scout cookies, which I participate quite a bit in. Peyton also attends services regularly at Northside Christian Church and is a swimmer on the YMCA swim team. During the summer, she swims for the Coventry Summer Swim Team. It is a pleasure and honor to recognize Peyton as Coventry Student Service Award recipient. Peyton is a great role model to her classmates. She sets a good example by being on task, getting her work done, and helping others. Congratulations, you make us proud.
All right, so I have the next Student Service Award and that's Jason Woodard from Dare Elementary. If I could have Dr. Kekavalli come up with him. So Jason Woodard is a fifth grader, fifth grade student at Dare Elementary School and he's a standout student. As part of a military family, Jason has traveled the world visiting India, Germany, Spain, and Rome, to name a few, and he became a Dare Dolphin five years ago when his family relocated from Hawaii. His teachers describe him as an enthusiastic learner, bringing real-world examples to every discussion. Jason works well with others and participates daily. At Dare, Jason serves as Vice President of the SCA. In addition to serving on the SCA, he's also involved in the Chrome Club and the Garden Club. Jason is a student leader and helps two teachers sponsor the coding club for younger students. Outside of school, Jason stays active swimming and playing baseball, as well as field hockey. Jason is a member of Boy Scouts Troop 123 and in Boy Scouts, Jason helps clean up and beautify our local community through service projects. He has traveled as far as Virginia Beach to volunteer for this important work. Jason says PE is by far the best part about school. He also loves math, hanging out with his friends and traveling with his family, and Jason's short-term goal this year is to make it to the end of the school year without any big problems. Long-term, he would like to continue to make straight A's in school. Dare Elementary School is proud to honor Jason as their Dare recipient of the Student Service Award. Congratulations. So now, we have the next Student Service Award and Ms. Haywood.
I do thank you, Talene Tumani, if you will come forward. Did I say that correct? Come on forward and from Queens Lake Middle School. Joining her is Principal, Mr. Scott Meadows. Talene Tumani is an eighth grader at Queens Lake Middle School. Staff describe Talene as a student with a huge heart that leads by example. She demonstrates a strong work effort in all of her classes. Each quarter, Talene earns an A average in the most demanding courses available. Her commitment to academic excellence, service, and outstanding character played off last year when she was admitted into the National Junior Honor Society. Talene's initiative and love for learning goes beyond the traditional school setting. She is fluent Arabic and has earned an A average in French 1 and 2. For the past three years, she has spent time on Saturdays studying Russian and recently added lessons in Korean to her list of languages she would like to master. Her talent also extends to the area of performing arts. For the past three years, Talene has studied the piano, participated in the middle school art magnet program, and Odyssey of the Mind. She is a regular volunteer at the Mariners Museum and has helped with Meals on Wheels. We are all very proud of Talene's successes and look forward to all that she will accomplish while in York County public schools. Please join me in congratulating Talene.
All right, now, we're going to move into our Community Volunteers of the Month and Ms. Haywood, you have the first one.
Back up, yes. Our volunteer is Barbie Argabright. Did I pronounce that correctly? Barbie, if you will come forward with Principal, Dr. Maggie Gardner. On any given day, Barbie Argabright can be seen in the halls of Coventry Elementary School. She is at our school so often that people who may not know better would think that she is part of the faculty. In fact, she has logged just over 140 hours to date. While she is not an official faculty member, she is an incredibly dedicated parent of two boys whom invest so much in her time for the betterment of the school, the students, and the staff. As a tireless member of the PTA, Barbie has assisted with the planning and execution of a number of school-wide activities. She has contributed to our bingo night, the Cougar Dash, family movie night, and the snowball dance, to name just a few. Furthermore, Barbie is always willing to lend a hand to other PTA committees in need of the extra help. Barbie has spent countless hours decorating the halls of our building with encouraging and empowering messages for the students. Additionally, her boundless creativity is evident in the murals and posters hanging throughout the school for Read Across America. In the spring, Barbie is pulling weeds and spreading mulch in the gardens of the school's courtyard. Also, for two consecutive years, she alongside with several other families decorated the sidewalks in front of the school with messages of kindness for Bully Prevention Week. Barbie took it a step further by capturing the event on film and creating an inspiring movie. As a result, the whole school was able to view the event on the morning show. Another example of Barbie doing that little extra was when our school was impacted by the devastating illness of our beloved librarian. The school had planned a day of pink and crazy socks in Mrs. Harris's honor. Barbie went around and captured both photos and video messages from staff and students to make into a very special movie that was later sent to Mrs. Harris. Coventry Elementary is incredibly fortunate to be the recipient of all the hard work and devotion that Barbie Argabright brings. She is a fabulous model for what it means to show true dedication to her community. Her hard work and commitment to CES makes Barbie the perfect recipient of the Volunteer of the Month Award. Please join me in congratulating Barbie Argabright.
Thank you, Ms. Haywood. And now, next up, we have Mr. Medford. You have the next volunteer of the month.
If I can get Deb Metcalf to come up, please, with Dr. Kekavalli, the principal of Dare Elementary School.
Ms. Metcalf is the grandmother of Bradley Metcalf, a fourth grader at Dare Elementary. She began volunteering with the PTA in the 2014-15 school year. Within the PTA, Mrs. Metcalf took on chairing the Cut and Paste Chair Committee and is currently serving as a board treasurer for the last two school years. In addition to her outstanding work as board treasurer, Mrs. Metcalf does so much to contribute to enriching the educational programs for students at Dare Elementary School. Deb chairs and coordinates all spirit nights with local businesses. Those events have collectively raised almost $600 this school year alone. She is full of creative and fresh ideas that promote school and community partnerships, as well as including all students. Deb keeps the community informed by posting ads for spirit events on Facebook and has been working diligently to get parents signed up for community rewards at our local Kroger. Among her PTA teammates, Mrs. Metcalf has earned the nickname "Bird Dog" as she is the first to bird dog an issue. When an issue arises, no stone is left unturned until she finds a solution. She always finds the best deals and coupons to save the PTA money and make the budget stretch even farther. Mrs. Metcalf has been busy this year scheduling multiple cultural art assemblies for students to enjoy and has supported the efforts for Dare's first musical, Lion King, scheduled to premiere this spring. Mrs. Metcalf assists at every PTA event and we have lots of them. She always makes herself available for PTA business, working long hours at home and volunteering her time at Dare multiple days a week. We are so thankful for Deb's energy, commitment, and positive attitude. We are delighted to honor her as Dare's Volunteer of the Month. Congratulations.
So next up, we have Dr. George, you have the next community volunteer of the month.
I do, thank you, Mr. Richardson. If we could have Solitaire Cribs and Mr. Meadows, please come on, back up.
It is with pleasure that I present Mrs. Solitaire Cribs as a Volunteer of the Month from Queens Lake Middle School. In an age where the demands of life pull us in multiple directions, Mrs. Cribs continually makes time to support the students, the staff, and the community at Queens Lake Middle School. Mrs. Cribs' commitment to Queens Lake has proven to be invaluable and endlessly appreciated. This is her second year with Queens Lake and she has, without question, made an impact on the school. Each year, Mrs. Cribs helps kick off the school year by organizing a PTA luncheon to welcome back the staff and to kick-start PTA membership drive. As we begin the school year, she works to ensure that the PTA is a major presence during our open house and back-to-school nights. Looking for opportunities to support staff, she has continued to promote the PTA's Mini Grant Initiative, which was developed as a way to lessen out-of-pocket purchases for teachers. Each year, she has jumped feet-first into two of our major PTA fundraising events, Non-Fright Night and the Holiday Bazaar. For each of these events, Mrs. Cribs plays a significant role in leading the planning, organizing food donations, coordinating volunteers, setting up booths and displays, and the cleanup following each event. The completion of these larger school activities by no means signals an end to Mrs. Cribs' annual involvement. This year, she has collaborated with the board to establish a Watchdog Dads program. Through this program, we have seen a significant increase in the number of volunteers actively in the building and at school events. In addition, she has taken her leadership role in planning for all of the staff recognition activities, as well as the end-of-the-year student activities, such as the eighth-grade dance and the awards program. Along the way, she has worked to partner with the school to organize projects such as the Career Conversations Event, which directly impacts Queens Lake students and helps to stress the importance of college and career readiness as students transition to high school. Mrs. Cribs is at her core a gracious and kind person committed to serving others. She has been a significant asset to the Queens Lake Middle School community and is deserving of this recognition as she serves to enhance the educational experiences for our student and our staff. Thank you and congratulations.
And thank you. So now, we have the York Foundation for Public Education presentation. Ms. Haywood, would you like to share comments?
Yes, thank you. Congratulations to Mary Hots, a fifth grader from Dare Elementary School, for reciting the Pledge of Allegiance at tonight's school board meeting. We would also like to recognize tonight's Student Service Award recipients, Peyton Short from Coventry Elementary, Jason Woodard from Dare Elementary, and Talene Tumani from Queens Lake Middle School. We also want to recognize our four Seniors of the Month, Alexa Wilson from Bruton High, Allison Kenny from Grafton High, Zachary Coldsnow from Tab High, and Noah Fields from York High who could not attend with us tonight, but will come to us in March. Special gifts from Cookie Tex and Edible Tweet are being presented on behalf of the York Foundation for Public Education and in partnership with their donor, Jeannie Fioka of Cookie Tex and Edible Tweet. Each recipient will also be receiving a Walmart gift card donated by a foundation supporter. And presenting the gift to you tonight is Mrs. Christina Head, a York Foundation for Public Education Board Member. Again, congratulations to each of you for your accomplishments.
So next, you're up, Dr. Shandor, for sharing comments about school board appreciation.
Thank you. In recognition of School Board Appreciation Month, we would like to present each of our outstanding school board members with a Virginia School Board Association Certificate of Recognition, along with a gift as a way to express our appreciation to them for their support, leadership, and student advocacy that they provide to our school division each and every day. I will share that I've already given them this information before the meeting, so if we can just give the board a big round of applause for all the work that they do. We actually did give you guys a small token of appreciation. Also, I have two principals here this evening that I'm going to ask to please come forward to share a few words on behalf of the board. So I'm going to ask Dr. David Wright, Principal from Bethel Manor Elementary, if he'll please come forward. And in the on-deck circle, if we could have Ms. Arletha Dockery, she could please come forward as well.
Good evening, Chairman Richardson, Vice Chairman George, Board Members, and Dr. Shandor. It's my pleasure to be with you this evening as we recognize you during School Board Appreciation Month. On behalf of the nine other elementary principals, our students and staff, we'd like to thank you for your dedication, passion, and commitment to our school division. The YCSD School Board focuses on what is best for all students. You focus on student achievement and implementing policies that will ensure success for all students. You have a collaborative relationship with staff and the community and establish a strong communication structure to inform and engage both internal and external stakeholders in setting and achieving our YCSD strategic goals. With that being said, this evening, I want to stress the importance and the power of words. Words create filters through which people view the world around them. A single word can make a difference between a good day and a bad day. With word study in place in all elementary classrooms, it's evident words connect, transform, and empower our students to become strong readers and writers. The book, The Word Collector by Peter Reynolds, is a great story in which the main character, Jerome, has a goal of collecting as many words as he can. Perhaps the key moment of Jerome's journey is when he slips and all the words become jumbled. He doesn't cry over them, nor does he give up. He simply strings them together and uses them to recreate the sources which he drew the words from in the first place, as well as create something new out of them. He also finds the simplest words to be incredibly effective in uniting people. Words tend to either erect or obliterate boundaries between human beings. Thankfully, this book is about forming bonds in the most unusual way. Thankfully, this book is about forming bonds in the most unusual way. This evening, each of you will be given a copy of this book, and inside the cover, each elementary principal inscribed a message to you. Also, you'll be given a frame specific to each of you containing ten words unambiguously describing you. Each of us choose our words wisely to describe you. Did you know the average person says about 16,000 words a day? That's 112,000 words a week, and that's over 5 million words every year. Words have power. So when we say what we really think, our words do matter. This evening, I'd like to leave you with the following: We appreciate each of you and value your service. It is my hope my words this evening give you the strength to continue to lead, support, and inspire all of us. Thank you for everything you do for YCSD.
Thank you very much.
Can't wait to see the words they chose for me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wright.
On behalf of the secondary principals, I would like to take this opportunity to thank you for the incredible work that you do serving our students as well as our faculty and staff. We know that this work is rewarding and at times arduous to ensure that our high-performing school division remains a leader in our area. We appreciate the kind notes of affirmation and your presence at numerous school events that you attend throughout the year. Our students, faculty, and staff sincerely appreciate your unwavering dedication and numerous years of service on the board. We hope that you reflect and also know that your great work is the reason that we are a great school division. Thank you.
Thank you. Right here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the gifts and thank you for those kind words. They were wonderful. So now, we're going to move on to our Accent on Academics, and Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson, board members. In this evening's Accent on Academics presentation, the Tiger Path Project by TAB High School focuses on student problem-solving, STEM skills to create a path from TAB High School to TAB Middle School. Through this project, students gain valuable experiences related to land use, local laws, design, and funding. To share more about this presentation and introduce the students and other presenters is Mr. Paul Rice, TAB High School principal. Mr. Rice?
Good evening, Dr. Shandor, Chairman Richardson, members of the board. I'm Paul Rice, principal at TAB High School, and it is my pleasure to be here tonight to present the February Accent on Academics Tiger Path, which represents three key beliefs of TAB High School: purposeful instruction, high standards, and providing students with opportunities to collaborate with real-world experiences. Great teaching ideas come in many venues: in the hallway, at lunch, or in a PLC meeting. But the one thing they have in common is great teachers. I want to thank Ms. White and Ms. Miller, who are here with us tonight, who have been a driving force behind this. So I would now like to introduce Jerry Sun and to present our Tiger Path Project.
Okay, so we have folders for you. On the right pocket, we have the current presentation that we're showing. On the left, we have lesson plans, as well as our past presentation that we shared at our expo last year.
Thank you.
All right, my name is Jerry Sun. I am a cross-country runner at TAB High School.
Hi, my name is Nick. I am not a cross-country runner at TAB High School. As you can clearly see, I'm playing for the tennis team, and I'm also a debater.
My name is Aaron Jin. I'm a member of Mu Alpha Theta. I'm also a cross-country runner.
And my name is Michael Rich, and I also do Mu Alpha Theta, and I'm part of cross-country team.
All right, so good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, we'll be presenting our path project. Excuse me. We've been working on this project for about a year and a half now, and this project actually proposes a path in between the TAB Middle School and the TAB High School. We feel like this path would be helpful for TAB High School students and the community as a whole in York County.
Okay, so we have a list of concerns that we'd like to share. So TAB High School has a large area for athletics, but none for cross-country. And as you see, we have three cross-country runners, and they can all attest to it. So we can't even hold a cross-country meet as well. A reduction in availability of school-provided transportation has been seen. There are always rerouting, and some of those pictures on your screen, the bottom one is actually of a York County bus, where they're asking for more bus drivers because we always have to reroute as there's a shortage. 61.9% of households have both parents employed, according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics. This means that a lot of the time, for 61% of families, they cannot have their parents send them to and from many extracurricular activities, especially ones across Big Bethel Road, which connects the high school to the middle school. Big Bethel Road is windy. It is very dangerous. It is relatively fast, at 45 miles per hour being the speed limit. There's limited visibility, meaning that kids who want to go from the high school to the middle school either have to walk through uncleared forest, or they have to walk on very, very dangerous roads. And also, creating this path would be an incredible experience for everyone, so we would have more interactive learning, et cetera.
All right, so as Neku said before, our need is for a safe pathway between, for the students and athletes, between TAB High School and TAB Middle School. This could be a long-distance running slash walking trail for exercise, and we could also have stations for local community members as well. Because according to the CDC, 23% of adults actually don't give enough physical exercise. So that means that this would actually be able to promote physical exercise in our community, and it could be opportunities for adults and family members to get together and do stuff within the community, as well as it would be helpful for the student body as a whole.
So our proposed solution for this Tiger Path is to create a walking, a safe walking path from TAB High School to TAB Middle School that accommodates bicycles for those kids that like using skateboards, bicycles, et cetera. We also want to create a three-mile cross-country course around TAB High School so that we can host cross-country meets and practice there without having to resort to highways or going along unsafe roads. We also want to create exercise stations, as my partner said before, to promote exercise within the community and create a healthier community. And we also want to provide additional parking, drinking water, trash receptacles, and lighting along the path, just to make the path safer, just for the night runners, and, you know, lighting is always a safe option. And we also want to create learning stations throughout the path to promote academics. We could create like history stations, or we can create like stations that tell kids about the wildlife that inhabits the local area. We could also establish a butterfly garden, frog pond, bee habitat. Honestly, the possibilities are endless if we establish a nature-wide trail through our, around our school, because there's so much land use. And we also, for the cultural arts, we also might plan to create an amphitheater for the, for local artists, actors, and any literal arts clubs.
There are some possible issues that are in the way of creating our path. Some of them include the cost of the path, and there are a lot, and the zoning. It cuts through private property that are owned by residents of York County, and landscaping issues, endemic endangered species, and environmental concerns, which we have looked at.
So the path you see before you is our proposed path. The blue line represents the path from the TAB High School to TAB Elementary School. As you can see, it'll go through the private property of Ash Harry Richardson, and it might cut through Virginia Power, Power and Company and Co., and then it will join with a pre-existing path near Mount Vernon, which will eventually lead to TAB Middle School. Our cross-country path is a 3.1 mile course, because in most cross-country races, need that amount of mileage in order to host a meet. That will go around the forest, and it should connect with a pre-existing cross-country path, like small path that we have at TAB High School. So these are the current property lines that we're going to be dealing with. As you can see, VA Power is over here, and then we have TAB High School over here. TAB Middle School is off to the left. And here's a wider view of the property line areas. As you can see, this whole area marked by the orange dot is the Ash Harry Richard, Ash Richard, Harry Richard Ash's property. And the yellow dot represents the Victory Estates Homeowners Association, and the green dot is the, the green dot is the Virginia Electric Power and Co. So the map you see before you is Hurricane Storm Surges. This is just to show that the, that our area that we'll be building the path is safe from any hurricane storm surges or any environmental dangers.
So we took some pictures to show the path, the path we take. It starts at TAB High School, and this is right behind TAB High School at the start of the current cross-country path. Then, this is Harry Richard Ash's property. As you can see, it's a little swampy during times of rain, so we'd need to make a wooden path, which would allow for bikes and other vehicles with wheels to travel on. Then, we get to the sidewalk on Big Bethel. This is approaching TAB Middle School, and we wouldn't need to make much additions to this. Then, there's the entrance to TAB Middle School. This is one of the, or it's close to where the path ends, and this is the parking lot of TAB Middle School.
All right, so got to talk about the cost, right? It's always about the money. So the best possible ways to get money would be, obviously, if YCSD would be able to move around their budget to give us some to create this path. But there's also research grants. As you see here, we've listed walkabout mini-grants, non-infrastructure grants. These are all possible grants. We actually already applied to the Samsung Solve for Tomorrow grant, and we got top five, and we actually want a tablet. Not any hard cash, but it's a tablet. And what would also be excellent is if we could actually start some grassroots funding, such as a bake sale or something for the community to actually help fund for this project.
So this is a very cross-curriculum type thing. So for math, of course, we can survey land. We can also use drone footage, which is a technology thing, to, you know, show aerial footage of the path. You know, create a YouTube video, get some advertising, maybe get some ad revenue, you know? Also, we have also integrated activities for all levels of math. You can see that on the left side, I believe, of your thing, behind other sheets. We can also conduct statistical tests based on surveys that we do amongst the community to see, you know, the general opinion, the percent error, et cetera. And we can also create 3D models using 3D printers. So for science, this is a huge biology project, so we can contact the VA Master's Naturalists, and we can walk property with the students, talk about the watershed properties, as well as discuss the wildlife there. They can also assist with clearing the land, and we can also establish the habitats for the existing indigenous creatures to our area, and of course, butterfly gardens, bee hives, et cetera. For the arts, we have a plan. We want to have an amphitheater out there, so for our arts programs, because right now, our drama room is pretty lackluster, in my opinion. So having an outdoor facility would be amazing, and that could help with, you know, local performances as well. Maybe get some revenue there. Right now, the venue, never know, pays for itself. And physical education, that's apparently obvious, of course. We can have, you know, we have the exercise stations, walking, running, cross-country. All my guys know that we really, really want a new cross-country path, because currently the path that we have is basically cleared out from running over it so much, not so much as an actual established path. And for history, we could always talk about the local history of our community, and English, and for all subjects, in fact, we can go out and have an outdoor classroom, which would be so fun and amazing. So our next step is basically, we're going to have student surveys sent around, as well as, you know, parental surveys, to conduct our statistical test to see the, how much the community would enjoy having such a path. We can contact the VA Master's Naturalists, as I mentioned earlier, to talk about the endangered species and wildlife. Of course, we'd also need to contact the property owners, especially the private property that we went on. We can also investigate more grant opportunities that we listed earlier and apply to more of them, and we can also go over more VDOT regulations and laws. And of course, our final slide is discussion. These are pretty much question headers for you guys to talk about: feasibility, community involvement, county involvement, and the approval process. So we now stand for questioning. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to say, it's obvious you've done your homework on this one. You've done a good job. That was excellent presentation.
You are very energetic.
Yeah, excellent. And, go ahead.
Y'all didn't miss a beat. There's some state organizations that might want to take lead on how complex you, I mean, you took this to levels that they may, they may learn something. If it's doable, y'all could probably get it done. I'm ready to write a check, Bill.
So, but great presentation. I like the fact that not only did you just look at it here, but you dug deep, and you just went different directions in your presentation. And every time when I thought, okay, they were pretty much, what more can they explore? And you went another direction again. So y'all do some fantastic work. Congratulations. Great job.
Can you go back to the slide on the cost? This is really small. I can't see this very well. Still can't see there.
It's behind you. You're going to have to, yeah, the projector, sorry. These are just some possible grants that we actually researched. There's probably more, but these are the ones we've found so far.
On the VDOT website right now.
Yes, on the VDOT website.
Okay. That's great.
We want a tablet already, so we're getting close.
There you go.
You can do it.
All right, thank you. It was a great job. Thank you so much. So lastly, before we take our break to meet all the award recipients and everyone that's presented tonight, we have a special presentation this evening. So I'd like our vice chair, Dr. George, if you would take over this part of the meeting while Dr. Shandor and myself go down front. But I'd like to ask our board clerk, Ms. Sandy Ford, to also join us down front as well.
Oh, yeah. Gotcha.
The VSBA Board of Directors has designated the third week in February as VSBA School Board Clerk Appreciation Week. Board clerks pay a significant, play a significant role in assisting school board members, superintendents, and our local schools. We would like to recognize tonight our School Board Clerk for a job well done. She gives a concentrated effort on the part of all those she serves: school board members, superintendent, administrators, school staff, students, and the community. Even though showing our appreciation should be a year-round process, we would like to express our appreciation this evening to assure that she receives the thanks that she deserves. We would like to present her with these flowers, a card from our board, and this resolution. Whereas the education of youth is essential to the future of our community, state, country, and world, and whereas the County School Board of York County depends on the School Board Clerk to keep accurate records of the meetings and proceedings of the school board, a record of all receipts and disbursements, and a record of all official acts, and whereas Mrs. Sandy Ford performs other duties in connection with the business of the York County School Division as may be required by the school board, and whereas Mrs. Ford works directly with students, educators, parents, volunteers, business partners, and community members on behalf of the school board and superintendent, and, do we have her crying yet? Whereas Mrs. Ford and the performance of her duties is often required to work extra hours attending school board meetings and supporting board member activities, and whereas Mrs. Ford provides the highest level of care, compassion, and commitment to the staff and students of the York County School Division to ensure that students achieve their highest potential, and as such, provides an invaluable service for the school board members and the superintendent. Now, therefore, be it resolved on this 25th day of February in the year 2019 by the County School Board of York County, Virginia, that Mrs. Sandra Ford is hereby commended and thanked for her dedicated service to the school division, the citizens of York County, and the children who attend York County schools. Thank you, Mrs. Ford. Congratulations.
And I'm just going to add that...
Now, therefore, be it resolved on this 25th day of February in the year 2019 by the County School Board of York County, Virginia, that Mrs. Sandra Ford is hereby commended and thanked for her dedicated service to the school division, the citizens of York County, and the children who attend York County schools. Thank you, Mrs. Ford. Congratulations.
And I'm, I'm just gonna add that it can be one of those days where you, it just, things are just all over the place and I'll have a question or something, a business piece of something I need to take care of, so I'll call. And Sandy, when she answers that phone, it'll brighten your day. You can, you, the infectious smile, like, comes through the phone. Um, and if anybody that knows Sandy or ever had interaction with her, not a day or minute goes by that she's not smiling, she shares her smile and her heart is golden. So, thank you for everything you do. Appreciate it.
And to piggyback on that, not only just the phone calls, if you receive an email from her, the, the, what she says at the end of that email, "Have a wonderful day."
Absolutely.
Every time, so we thank you for all that you do.
And, somehow, you never seem to get frazzled about anything. This is what you see. This is what you see every single day, day in and day out. And, Richard, you're a lucky man. Thank you for sharing her with us. And thank you so much, Sandy, for everything you do.
And as a board member, um, I found out how invaluable you were first year I was here. But as board chair, oh my gosh, you couldn't do it without you. So, thank you so much.
Alright, we'll be in recess, so we can come down and meet some of the presenters and award recipients. Thank you. Alright, we'll call this meeting back to order. And we're gonna start with unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business to discuss? Okay. Hearing none, we're gonna move ahead and we're gonna go into our capital projects report. And Dr. Shandor, would you share remarks on that?
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. I'm gonna ask, um, Mr. Mark Shearhart, Associate Director of Capital Plans, he'll present this month's capital project report. Mr. Shearhart.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor, here's your capital projects report for the month of February. We have a many, many topics, many projects to talk about this evening. The first of these is Tab Elementary School. As you know, we started the renovations there last summer. This, uh, during the winter break, they repainted the gymnasium in parts, so they have one wall left to do. Uh, and they also started commissioning the HVAC systems, which is making sure that the systems operate properly. They did find a few problems and they're in the process of solving those now. Uh, they're also commencing, will commence the rest of the Phase Two work in the summer of 2019. So, although there was a lot of work done last summer, we have probably only about two-thirds of the project completed. So, Phase Two will complete, uh, will, Phase Two will consist of finishing the metal roof installation, replacing the exterior windows and door, windows and frames, changing out the original, uh, classroom casework, replacing the original interior door, wood doors, and installing LED lights and fire sprinkler systems in the sixth classroom addition, as well as the cafeteria and the gymnasium. Uh, we also will be repainting the cafeteria and finished painting the gymnasium, and also replaining, replacing the gymnasium floor with a synthetic, synthetic floor. So, this is what the gymnasium looked like just before we went into the renovation last year. You can see here, the custodians were moving everything out of the building so we could, uh, do the work last summer. But this is the way the gym looked. It had a dark blue at the bottom there and a white stripe in the center and then the black ceiling. So, we wanted to make the room pop and lighten it up a little bit, so this is what we did. So, we painted the ceiling all white and then painted the duckwork there orange and then put the orange stripe around the wall, so it made a big difference there. This next summer, we're gonna go ahead and again, replace that floor there. We'll replace the, the, uh, foam pads on the, out, the wall there behind the basketball goal and, uh, and also replace the lights. And here, we're gonna put LED lights in this gymnasium. So, there's a few things left to do in there. The next school is Tab Elementary School, and this is the roof replacement. Uh, so, the contract documents are all done. Construction is gonna start March 15th. The contractor, and this is the Friday, they, they plan to start on Friday, work right through the weekend, and just keep right on rolling. The, uh, the reason we're starting this school, it's starting during March is so that the, uh, the roof can be completed by August 30th, and that's why we have this substantial completion date of August 30th there. Uh, there will be some things showing up before March 15th. There are contractors being, roll-off dumpsters there, construction materials and things like that will be delivered to the site, so they can start on March 15th. The project will include removing the existing shingles and repl- replacing the roof sheathing, that's the wood shea- wood sheathing underneath the shingles that are there now, installing ice and water shielding, shield, and then they'll install a metal roof on top of that. There is some damage underneath the soffits, uh, that's there now from the roof leaks, and so we're gonna repair that. And then also, in the media center, they've had some problems with drywall and ceiling damage because of roof leaks, so that'll all be replaced and repaired. So, this is a drawing or a rendering of what this school will look like. Basically, it's gonna look the same, almost the same color as the ceiling, the shingles on the roof now, but it will be metal. And, uh, the big difference is you'll see the metal ribs in the roof. It looks somewhat similar to what Tab High looks like now, except for it'll be green. So, this is the area we want to start first with the roof. Uh, it, it covers over the, uh, girls locker room area, the kitchen, and the art and band, the band room, and the chorus room, and the art room. So, around those areas there, we want to minimize impact on the instructional atmosphere or environment. And this contractor is very conscientious of that. They've worked on multiple schools before, so they understand they need to minimize how much they're affecting the students and the learning environment. The next project is Grafton Middle and High School, HVAC replacement and main office orientation with the addition of the security vestibules. So, this project was posted last Friday, uh, by, uh, by the purchasing for bids. The bid, the pre-bid meeting is on March 5th, and our projects and the bids, we're looking for bids to be received on March sec- 22nd. Uh, the high school and center of the building will be the summer of 2019, and then the middle school and the high school band room will be the summer of 2020. And this map here shows you how that affects the school here. So, everybody, everything in pink here will be summer of 2019, and the summer of 2020 will be the band room and the rest of the middle school. So, this is, uh, an architect's rendering of what the new entrance will look like to , uh, Grafton High School and Middle School. They look very similar. So, right now, at this view right now, you're standing at the front door, looking in at the new security doors that are not there now. And then the wall that's on the right, left-hand side is now red, will now be removed, and it'll all be glass. So, you're looking at that right here on the left-hand side. And then, as you, if you turned a little bit to the left, you'd see this here, you're looking into the offices there. Uh, so, this is what the new offices will look like at Grafton Complex and, uh, Grafton High School and Middle School. So, then, we have a package out on the street right now for bids, and we combined Dare Elementary, Coventry, and Mount Vernon projects together in one package. We had one architect design it. We're looking for one contractor to do all these projects this summer. So, the first of these is Coventry Elementary School. This is security vestibule. So, this vestibule, to put the second set of security doors there, it was causing some, um, congestion there at the front door, so what the pro- what the idea was to expand the front lobby outward. And so, we're creating a bigger overhang in front of the school there and pushing the lobby outward, uh, which, installing this, uh, installing the security vestibule there also forced us to redesign the flow, traffic flow in the main office. So, we're moving the counter and things like that in there, and I'll show you, uh, a rendering of what this looks like. So, this project, this group of projects is out for bid, and the bids are due tomorrow afternoon at 3 o'clock on the 26th. This construction will take place this summer, and the administrative, administrative staff will remain in the building, but they'll be relocated to some classrooms during the construction in the front of the building. So, this is currently what Coventry Elementary looks like from the outside, and this is the architect's rendering. So, you see they're pushing the front out a little bit, putting the name above it, so they're gonna make it pop more and you'll know where the main entrance is to the building. Right now, there's two, two doors on the front of the building, it's kind of not clear which one is the main entrance. This will make it clear. The next school that we're talking about in this group of three is Mount Vernon. So, the security vestibule there, we also are having to push the lobby out a little bit, uh, to create, to create more, uh, better traffic flow in the, uh, in the lobby, uh, or the security vestibule. And we're also having to redesign the main office there to provide better circulation flow, uh, with the security vestibule again. Again, this is, uh, the bid for this is due on the 26th. Construction will take place this summer. The administr- administrative staff at this school, Mount Vernon, will also remain in the building, and it'll just be relocated to some classrooms while this construction is taking place. Also happening this summer is the gym floor, and the Mount Vernon gym will be replaced. So, they're replacing the existing floor in there with a synthetic floor and, uh, replacing the, the pads on the walls, similar to what we did at Tab, what we're doing at Tab Elementary School. And this project, again, is open bids for, open bids tomorrow. Construction this is summer. We do have a breezeway enclosure, uh, drawn up, or the design completed for, um, for Mount Vernon, but this is a bid option. We're not sure if we have the funding to do this prod, this part of the project. So, we are gonna do the gym, we are gonna do the security vestibule, we're not, just not sure about this, the breezeway enclosure. This will involve demol- demolishing portion of the existing breezeway, the concrete walkway, and the metal canopy above it, and then creating a hallway there with a new library entrance on that side. And it also includes a small office and a conference room that we're adding into that, that portion of the building. So, again, this project is out, out for bids, due to bids due tomorrow. And if the bid option, if we can do the bid option, if the bids come in low enough, hopefully we can, uh, start this construction June 17th, but it will go all the way through January 31st of 2020. So, during the first part of the school year, first half of the school year, construction will be taking place, um, in that area. We're trying to have the demolition, the way the specification is written, the demolition will be done during the summer. Concrete will be poured, and then you just have to build the rest of the building after school starts. So, this is the entrance of, uh, Mount Vernon Elementary School, the existing entrance, and this is what it'll look like, the architect's rendering of what it'll look like after they get the work done. Next proj- next school is, uh, Dare Elementary Breezeway Enclosure and Gym Floor. So, the breezeway enclosure, pretty much the same thing we're doing at Mount Vernon, except for this one is gonna happen this summer. Uh, it will start this summer, and again, June 19th, June 17th, but it will also go through January 31st. Uh, again, it, this one here involves demolishing the entire existing breezeway, the concrete, the metal bree- uh, covering, uh, and then creating, again, a hallway and a lot, with a lobby, and then, uh, uh, includes a small office, a conference room, and some small breakout rooms for individual instruction. And then Gym Floor here was another project that will also happen this summer. They're replacing the existing, um, floor that's in there, the plastic tiled floor with some wooden, with a wooden floor. Uh, the reason we're using the wooden floor at Dare Elementary and the synthetic floor at Mount Vernon is because the roller skates will not roll on the synthetic floor, so we have to put a wooden floor in this gymnasium. This is what the breezeway looks like there right now, and this is what the architect's rendering, uh, will look like when it gets done. Basically, we're building a building between the three buildings and to tie all three buildings together, which, that's why it's taken as long as it does. So, Yorktown Elementary School, we're finally getting to put the, uh, do the parking lot expansion here. This will involve relocating one of the existing double-wide modular classrooms next to the Head Start trailer that's out there, and then removing two of the other modular classrooms. Uh, that's in order, that's in order to, uh, expand the parking lot. We had the pre-bid meeting on February 20th, and the bids are due March 7th. Construction will take place this summer. This is a little bit difficult to see. This is a, uh, the, um, one of the pages out of the blueprints. Uh, on the left-hand side, it's, it's, again, it's hard to see. Left-hand side in the white is actually the school building, and then up at the top, on the right-hand side, is, is the existing parking lot, and all of this dark, the gray area is all new parking lots. So, you can see we're expanding that, uh, parking lot there significantly at the school. Uh, there's, not on this drawing, but there's another small section of parking lot near Sees Road up there, Sees Lane up there, that will have an additional 15 spots that's not, that's not included with this group here. So, there's a lot of parking coming into, coming into Yorktown, and that's the reason we need to get those, uh, double-wide, uh, modular classrooms out of there. So, on top of all those projects, we do have a few other things going on this summer, or right now. Coventry Elementary School, metal roof replacement, the architects is, is in the process of designing this right now. We intend, uh, expect to have the design by March 15th or earlier. Dare Elementary School Roof Repair, this is pretty much what we did at Grafton Complex a couple of years ago, where we repaired the roof and encoded the entire roof to give us a 20-year warranty. And then, last of all, but not least, is York High School Door Replacement. They're replacing the doors, uh, the original doors that were in the building. We painted them during the construction, during the renovation a few years ago. Now, we're gonna go ahead and replace all those doors. Uh, so, no longer will be a painted gray door, a wood grain door with a single pane, uh, window in, in the door, and it's just gonna make the building look a lot better. And that's the last part of my presentation this evening. I'm sorry, it's so long. Do you have any questions for me?
I just wanna back up to Dare Elementary School. I know that, that gymnasium is shared, of course, with that skate rattle and roll, I believe it's Parks and Recreation. Um, wooden floor, is that, how, what would be the life of the wooden floor with the roller skating?
I'm not sure what the life is gonna be. We looked at different options of trying to solve that problem there, uh, with the, with the roller skates, and there just wasn't anything that looked like it'd hold up any better than the wood. We're actually getting a thicker wooden, uh, wooden floor, so it could be, uh, sanded and refinished multiple times to, to make it last as long as possible.
So, that's probably what's gonna, we'll end up having to refinish the floor, maybe more often or something. Okay.
So, I had one question on Dare Elementary as well. The new vestibule or the closing in of that, that area going back to, I think, the Extend Center there. You said right through those doors is gonna be a lobby and office area?
There's gonna be a small lobby there. Uh, right now, the Extend Center children come out the front of the building, students come out the front of the building to load the buses, so in, during inclement weather, they have a place to gather.
Okay.
Before they come outside. And the other, uh, other thought was there is, uh, in the evening, when the children are being picked up from skate rattle and roll, they have a place to stay while they're in, inside the building. They can see when their parents are pulling up out front, and then they can go outside. So, we gave a lot of glass out there and glass doors, so they can see what's going on out front.
Okay, great. I was thinking of that, and I was thinking that we, the registrar's office uses that during election time too for.
Yes.
Access to the, to the voting voter, to do voting. So, thank you.
Mark, I just have two quick questions. One, in the, the gym at, uh, Tab Elementary, I remember that, that back wall had problems. I think it was from the windows up there, correct?
Well, we, it was actually a seam on the, on the metal at the edge of the roof. We found, we've got pictures of it. Greg went up, Greg Dolek and his, and his maintenance guys went up there. They found the problem. They sealed that up so that wall could dry out, and that's the reason we couldn't put the paint on it. The wall was, had moisture inside of the wall.
Okay, and were those windows, did they need to be replaced there?
We are replacing those windows this summer.
Okay, so that's this summer, okay.
Yes, sir.
The, the only other thing I would ask is that wonderful playground in the middle, that muddy playground back there, is there any, is there anything we can do with that? Or is that just, I know it's a drainage issue coming off the building.
Well, we're, we, we just got a proposal today from the, uh, civil engineer to do design work. What we're trying to do is collect the storm water that runs off the roof and, and take that away from that area. There is some storm drainage out in front of the building. We hope to take some of the, all the drainage off the, the gymnasium that way. And so, we, we have some ideas of how to get that water away from that area. So, that's, that's what, that's, we just got the proposal today for that, for the design. So, we don't have a design yet.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you.
Alright, alright, thank you, Mr. Shearhart, for that report.
Thank you, Mr. Shearhart.
Alright, now, we're gonna move into our public participation in board meetings, and I'm gonna call up anyone that signed up to speak. Uh, so, there will be three opportunities to speak this evening. The first for general topics, the second specifically relating to comments relating to the public hearing on the FY20 operating budget, and the third is for the purpose of receiving community input on the appointment of an interim board member to represent District Two. So, I'll just read this for everyone that's coming up to speak. "The school board provides a public comment period for the public to comment on topics germane to the business of the school board. The school board expects that each speaker will be courteous and modeling to our students on how we can respectfully disagree with others' views. We ask that speakers address their comments to the entire school board and not to one individual board member, nor the superintendent, staff member, or the audience. Speakers will present their comments from the podium, and each speaker may speak up to three minutes. The timer will be visible to the speakers from the podium, and speakers should conclude their remarks when the red light comes on. As a reminder, the school board members do not respond to public comment during the meeting or the hearing." And I'll open for public comments for those that have signed up. up. So when you come up to the front, after you, please state your name and address, and the timer will start after you've stated your name and address. So the first speaker for the general comments is Chris Soto and Jessica Roan. Did I say that right? There you go, perfect.
Hello, my name is Jessica Roan, I'm 105 Oak Lane, Yorktown, Virginia 23693.
And I'm Chris Soto, 102 Terrance Circle, Yorktown, Virginia.
Perfect, thank you.
So hello, my name is Jessica Roan, I am a senior at Tab High School.
And my name is Chris Soto-Drow, and I'm a senior at Tab High School as well, and we're here today as members of Y Street, and Y Street is the award-winning youth volunteer program of the Virginia Foundation for Healthy Youth that focuses on promoting healthy living in Virginia. We are here to talk about how Y Street's 24/7 campaign partners with Virginia School Divisions to adopt, implement, and enforce 100% comprehensive tobacco and e-cigarette-free school policies. Under a 100% comprehensive policy, tobacco and e-cigarette use possession and distribution is prohibited by anyone, anywhere, and at any time. In the York County School Division, we are thankful to be protected by 100% comprehensive policies because of the strong and consistent commitment you have for the health of our youth community. You serve as an example to encourage other nearby school divisions to do the same."
February is not only school board appreciation month, but it is also when Tobacco-Free Spirit Day is held at schools within comprehensive divisions. There are 132 school divisions across Virginia, and only 40 of those divisions, like ours, have 100% comprehensive policies in place. Tobacco-Free Spirit Day gives students and staff the chance to celebrate the fact that the York County School Division is 100% e-cigarette and tobacco-free. At this year's Tobacco-Free Spirit Day event, we collected valentines from students and staff thanking you, the school board, for protecting our schools with a strong tobacco-free policy. We are here tonight to thank you and present, and to present these valentines to you to show our appreciation. I am thankful to be attending a school in a comprehensive school division because I am able to learn in a safe environment.
I'm super thankful for the 100% comprehensive division because I have the comfort of knowing that my peers and I will not be exposed to secondhand smoke on school grounds. Thank you for allowing us to have this privilege. Again, thank you for putting the health and safety of our staff, of your staff, students, and visitors first by doing everything you can to have 100% tobacco-free schools 24 hours a day and seven days a week. We have cards for you guys.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. All right, so we're going to call up our next speaker, and Talim Tamani and family, am I saying that right? Listen, an address of 114 Ivy Arch. Okay, so we're going to move ahead, to the next speaker, Katie Rutherford.
Good evening, Mr. Richardson, Dr. George, Mrs. Haywood, Mr. Medford, Dr. Shandor, and Mrs. Ford. I am the current president of the York Education Association, and we simply wanted to take a moment to say thank you for your support during school board, well, we want to take a moment during school board appreciation week, month, to say thank you to all of you for your support, your support of the community, your dedication to our schools, and your commitment to our students and staff. And as a small token, we have a gift for each of the school board members, and of course, for the fabulous and undeniably wonderful Mrs. Ford, the school board clerk. Thank you all so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wrote them in order for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So that concludes all of our speakers for the general comments period, so at this point, I'm going to close the general comments public hearing. And I'm now going to open up the public hearing on the FY20 operating budget. So before I open that up, Dr. Shandor, do you have some comments?
I do, I have just a few comments. Thank you, Mr. Richardson, board members. Before we open the public hearing, my budget proposal for FY20 has been released and copies are available in the public libraries in the county and on the school division's website. Tonight, the school board is conducting a public hearing on that, on that proposed budget. I want, do want to include some highlights from the budget proposal. The operating budget totals $145,466,410, or 5.1 million, or 3.63% more than the approved FY19 budget. The budget includes 3.95 million, or 5.67% increase in state revenue, and 1.25 million, or 2.34% increase in the county contribution, not including a $200,000 transfer from the county's revenues stabilization fund related to Impact Aid. The FY20 proposed budget is based on a projected student enrollment of 12,985 students. This is a 255-student increase in budgeted student enrollment. On the expenditure side, my recommendations regarding the FY20 budget focus on three main budget priorities: instruction and learning, retention and recruitment, and compliance and safety. I've also included just over $1 million in budget reductions to free up funds to assist in funding these three budget priorities. The school board will hold a work session on March 11th to have further discussion relating to the superintendent's proposed budget, and the school board is scheduled to approve their FY20 budget proposal on March 25th, for forwarding to the Board of Supervisors for their consideration during their budget process. And at this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Bowen if he'll please come to the podium, he has some updated information related to the state budget. Thank you, Mr. Bowen.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, Mr. Richardson, members of the board. Since our last work session, several things have happened at the state level that I wanted to bring you up to date on. Of course, crossover occurred, and in that process, that's where the House passes its budget, sends it to the Senate, the Senate passes budget, sends it to the, to the House. And then what we saw from those two budgets, the House budget, we saw a loss of $110,000, and with the Senate's approved budget, we saw a loss of almost $450,000. So the Senate, I mean, the General Assembly just concluded its session this Saturday, we're, are waiting to see the details. We do believe, though, we're going to fall somewhere in between that $110,000 and that $450,000. What we do know has changed, the governor proposed reducing the ratios for the school counselors, and those ratios have been increased again, not back to where they originally were, so we're going to have to tweak the numbers for our school counselors. The raise that the, that the governor proposed, it was, 3% was already in the budget for this year, he proposed adding an additional 2% effective July 1, from the state budget, that raise is effective September 1. So we're going to lose a little bit of state money for that three months of delay in that additional 2%. One thing I wanted to do, and I've heard this from several staff members, is just to clarify once again about the 5% raise that's in the budget for this year. Just, we, we had this conversation with the YEA, a number of members of the YEA, we also had continual questions from various staff members. But when we talk about the raise, a couple of things we need to look at. So last year, in our budget for FY19, we had a raise of about 3%. And so in order to get that funding, what we have to do is we have to look at the sources, and the sources of those funds, and I'll say, go into a big bucket. And that big bucket goes to all of the priorities, as Dr. Shandor has outlined, in his three main priorities. Last year, if you recall, was the first year of the biennium, and several things happened. We kind of had the perfect storm as far as state funding. So we had re-benchmarking process, which occurs the first year of every biennium, and that'll occur this coming fall, heading into FY21. But we got additional money from the state from the re-benchmarking process, so that filled up part of the bucket for FY19. Our local composite index decreased, which means the state paid more its share of cost of education, so that was additional money that came to the school division. The VRS rates decreased, so that means we paid less into VRS, so that freed up additional money. And then we also had savings from attrition and several other areas that we reduced costs last year, and then the, of course, the county's contribution of 1.5 million. So when you take in all those additional funds and less costs, that gave us the opportunity to provide a raise last year, even though the state didn't fund us, a compensation increase. So fast forward to FY20, what's in the budget is a 5% increase, and so the state's now contribution, how are we, how are we going to come up with a raise? We're not providing a 5% raise to our employees. So the question is, why not? Because the state is providing us with 5%. Well, to provide a 5% raise to all of our employees, it would cost about $5 million. It's almost $1 million per 1% increase, and that's the cost of the increase, plus the associated cost of the benefits. So we see our FICA increase, we see our VRS rates increase, our group life and retiree healthcare credit. So when you add all that together, it's roughly $1 million per 1%. The state's contribution for that 5% is $2.3 million. So they're providing just roughly over 2/5 of the funding to provide everyone in the division a 5% raise. So we would have to come up, we would have to identify sources, additional $2.7 million. Now, our total new revenue for FY20, it's estimated at $5.1 million. So if we gave a 5% raise, all of our new money would go to the raise. So the additional positions that we need, the 10 additional positions for student growth, the additional positions we need for special education, the additional social worker, all these other things that had been prioritized and are in the budget, would not occur if we gave a 5% raise. So I just thought I would share that information with you, hopefully that clarifies to the board, and certainly to the community, about the funding. And, and just to give you one thing, that, that funding is on SOQ-funded positions, and I'll give you just one example. We have 10 elementary schools. The state funds us on our elementary principals at 9.98 positions, so not even full 10 positions. For the assistant principals for those 10 elementary schools, they fund us at two assistant principals. We currently have 12. So for those additional 10 assistant principals, we pay 100% of the cost of that salary, of the benefits, and of any raise that's associated. So that's just one small example about the state funding. These are SOQs, but they're really minimal standards of quality, and I'll just leave them with that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Thank you, Mr. Bowen. So now we're going to open the, I'm sorry, is that all?
Yes.
Yeah. Open the public hearing for operating budget, and I would normally call an order of one and two, but I see that one and two has been changed, so I want to make sure with Dr. Lee and Carol Bauer, y'all agreed to switch on that? Okay, good, good, just make, I just don't want to get caught off guard afterwards, so I want to ask.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
No problem. So Carol Bauer, you are first, if you would just state your name and address, and the timer will start after that.
Good evening, Mr. Richardson, Dr. George, Mrs. Haywood, Mr. Medford, Dr. Shandor, senior staff and community members. February is school board appreciation month, and as members of the York Education Association, I've seen firsthand your dedication and thoughtfulness, and thoughtfulness, to which you as members of the York County School Board carry out your duties. You have been a friend of public education, and Lexi agreed to hand you out your buttons, so thank you very much. As Dr. Shandor mentioned in previous conversation, he is still continuing the discussion about his proposed budget. He and other staff have received input from many sources, and this open hearing is another chance and another opportunity to provide input to the process. The General Assembly was working well into the night Friday, Saturday, and even today to negotiate budget amendments, so additional funding information is still being finalized. Thank you, Mr. Bowen, for your update. This year, the General Assembly is providing more state support for compensation than they have in the last 15 years. Localities, including YCSD, should do everything they can to take full advantage of this increase. Virginia's average teacher salary is more than 9,000 below the national average, which ranks us well into the bottom half of the country. But even lower are the non-licensed staff salaries in York County. For many years, the YEA has advocated and spoke to the need to adjust, increase, and fix the non-licensed salary scales. We are heartened that Dr. Shandor is proposing to do that, and this is an opportunity to make a meaningful difference to those scales. However, we still have lingering questions about the proposed non-licensed staff salary adjustments. In particular, the YEA does not feel that expanding the non-licensed scale to 30 steps is an improvement. This means staff would have to work more years to achieve the top of the scale. There are many paras here in the audience tonight, and they can attest to the fact that the para job has changed dramatically over the years. Some paras are instructional specialists, and some are required to attend extra training in order to help manage difficult behaviors. Other non-licensed staff include the custodians. At my school, all three custodial staff members work a second job, McDonald's, landscaping, cleaning houses. And they're not alone, as many of the YCSD non-licensed staff work second and third jobs so they can pay their bills. A living wage is defined by the Bureau of Labor when less than 30% of a salary goes to housing. Our non-licensed staff's compensation does not meet this living wage threshold. We do agree that every step of the non-licensed scales should include an increase in compensation, and the YEA fully supports that proposal. We also encourage you to increase the substitute pay. The YEA has spoken about substitutes, and in particular, long-term substitutes who are very loyal. It's hard to conceive that an entire year compensation for a sub was only $18,000. A third area is the mental health of our students. We are encouraged of the fact that the General Assembly wants to increase the number of staff that we have for mental health, and we encourage you to look at that. The YEA appreciates all that you do in your capacity as school board members, and we know that you want the best for YCSD. Please continue the budget conversations and ask questions about the proposed budget.
Thank you.
Public school funding is both a state and a local responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bauer. And next up, we have Dr. Kimmy Lee. I'm going to say Kami Lee, I'm sorry, I apologize. If you'd just state your name and address before you start.
Kami Lee, 305 Dorothy Drive, Yorktown, Virginia 23692.
Thank you.
Good evening, thank you for your time. My name is Dr. Kami Lee. I'm here with Betty Lazarus and Riley Higgins, and we are school psychologists here in the division. We'd like to talk with you tonight about the growing mental health needs of our students, and how school psychologists are instrumental in providing supports to our students who are struggling with mental health concerns. Current data suggests that approximately 22% of our students will experience a diagnosable mental health condition by the age of 18. So in a classroom of 30 students, that would be one student per class, or in a school of 1,200 students, approximately 264 students. For those students who do seek mental health services, the majority will receive those services in school. YCSD's school psychologists assist teachers and administrators in addressing behavioral challenges, mental health concerns, and academic concerns. We provide individual counseling to students and consultative support for teachers, school counselors, school administrators, and parents. We conduct threat assessments and suicide screenings to support student safety. In the event of a crisis, we also provide grief counseling. School psychologists work with students, school personnel, and families to provide direct mental health services. Unlike other schools, school divisions, York County School Psychologists endorse a school-based model which allows greater access to psychological services. York County School Psychologists strive to provide a proactive and comprehensive service delivery to all students, but we typically find ourselves juggling many responsibilities simultaneously amongst multiple schools with very large caseloads. York County School Psychologists' student ratios range from one school psychologist to 1,500 students, to one school psychologist to 2,500 students, for an average of one school psychologist to 1,800 students. And the recommended SOQ ratio is one school psychologist to 1,000 students. So over the years, YCSD has experienced a 20% increase in students with disabilities and a 52% increase in our economically disadvantaged populations. And there have also been significant increases in students diagnosed with mental health conditions. In spite of these increases and the needs they present, there has not been an additional school psychologist position added to support these populations in 18 years. We strongly support the division's initiative to address the growing mental health challenges in our population, and we consider ourselves to be critical players in the delivery of mental health services. We do not believe that maintaining the status quo will satisfactorily address this growing need, and for this reason, we ask that you consider addressing this 18-year gap in adding additional psychological services personnel in your hiring decisions and discussions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so next up, we have Melissa Wade.
Hello, my name is Melissa Wade, I live at 111 Hidden Lane, Seaford, Virginia 23696. I teach at York High School, and educating students doesn't start when students walk through my classroom door. It starts when that child gets on the school bus, or uses that crossing guard to get to school. Education starts when that child receives the first meal of the day, or that fist bump from the kind janitor that greets them in the morning. You see, we can't spell respect, that's my shirt, without ESP, education support professionals. That includes bus drivers, custodians, cafeteria workers, clerical staff, nurses, computer techs, library support staff, and last but not least, para professionals, my right hand in the classroom. Para professionals are the unsung heroes of the classroom, they help with every aspect, from handling students to ensuring their final success. Para's starting pay is around a little over $11 an hour. My para can't be here tonight because she, like many non-licensed staff, is working her second job. She actually has three, but she's at her second one right now. Paras, along with other non-licensed staff, are not only, are not being paid a living wage, and can't afford to just work for York County School Division. I know that you have in the budget to raise salaries 1.6% in a restored step for licensed staff, as you are counting the 3% from last year as part of the 5%, and I understand all that, passed from Richmond, and in your budget, you plan on raising the non-licensed staff around 4%, some more, some less, and then spreading that scale from, kind of, I think it's from 15 to 30 steps, which fifteen to thirty steps, which has caused some confusion among the non-licensed staff. And I'll quote from one employee, "It seems like they're diluting the raise. As a licensed professional, I'm perfectly fine with non-licensed staff getting a bigger pay raise than I, as I know that they desperately need it, but I'm not sure it's enough. Please consider that not only giving them the pay raise they deserve, but bring them up to a living wage so that...and support our fellow workers at the York County School Division." A side note is that I was listening to the capital improvements projects, and I really didn't hear about the proposed change at York High School's library. And just a real quick second on that before I run out of time, but I'd heard that they were moving the library and moving like a third or two-thirds of the books upstairs and creating a cool media center for the kids to use downstairs. I just want to make sure that in those plans for the summer that they make arrangements so that the special needs children can still access those books upstairs, because right now that stairs are very dangerous and nobody's allowed to use them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, our next speaker is Pam Gasport. There you go.
Good evening, Pam Gasport, 108 Michaels Woods Drive in Hampton. I am a first grade teacher at TAB Elementary. Good evening, Dr. Shandor, Chairman Richardson, School Board members. I'm here to speak on behalf of a para educator at my school. She was unable to come tonight because of her second job, but she wrote, handwrote things that she wanted me to cover tonight about her job. She's been with the division for twelve years. She does have a college degree. Her net pay, what she takes home every two weeks, is about four hundred and forty dollars. So that's about ten thousand five hundred and sixty a year. Since her employment started with YCSD twelve years ago, she chose to have the offered health insurance, which was Anthem, and of course, as of January first this year, Cigna. Two and a half years ago, she started to see a specialist and receive shots twice a week and take medication daily. Out-of-pocket expenses at the time were to pay co-pay when seeing the specialist and for daily medication. But as of January first, she must pay co-pay for the specialist plus the doctor visit plus the shots plus the serum plus the medication until she reaches thirty-five hundred dollars deductible. Even then, medication and shots will not be covered. So she did the math, thirty-five hundred dollars divided by four hundred and forty dollars is eight paychecks, or four months' worth of her pay before Cigna even kick in anything. So she put eight paychecks, four months of her pay. So she has to decide, does she eat or does she get her medication? So she has stopped her weekly shots. She's down to one shot every other week. She will not see the doctor unless it's life or death because she completely cannot afford to go. So with the proposed pay raise, although it does sound good, I did the math, and she would take...she would have an additional sixty-seven dollars a month before taxes, VRS, or insurance, which would bring it down to about thirty-five dollars more a month. So that's not going to begin to cover her shots or any of the things that she needs from her...for her insurance, for her medical needs. So she wanted me to share that with you, that, you know, there are cases where people are hurting, and it's very low. She's single, she has no one to help her but herself. So on a side note, that's not that, I thank you for bringing up about the TAB Elementary playground. Please keep working on it. We have very little access to either of our playgrounds. They are almost always flooded, they are always soggy, we're not able to get on them at all, and it really limits the play areas for our children for recess. So please keep working on that. Thank you, good evening.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. So next, we have Helen Schmuck, next speaker.
Good evening, I'm Helen Schmuck, and I live at 312 West Woodland Drive, Yorktown, Virginia, 23692. I'm a student at Grafton Middle School, and I believe that since classes are large and it makes it...it makes it more difficult to learn, but para educators and teachers would make it a lot easier. And I also believe that we should have more school psychiatrists, because it would also help the mental health of students. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. So that's all we had signed up for our public hearing on the FY20 operating budget, so I'm going to close that public hearing. And next, we're going to have a public hearing on the input for the interim board member for District Two. So this is for the purposes of gaining input from the public on what qualities they would like their board member to have. Also, this is an opportunity for anyone that would like to speak for a particular candidate relating to the five that have applied for the vacant position in District Two. So I'm just going to recap the timeline of events. February sixth, we had a resignation in District Two. The announcement of that resignation and our crestfallen resumes was released on February the sixth to social media and local media outlets. On February fourteenth, a notice was published by the Daily Press announcing that a public hearing would be held today, February twenty-fifth, in order to receive input. Resumes were accepted until the deadline of 5:00 PM on February twentieth. On February twenty-first, the names of the five interested applicants were released to the public. All candidates were contacted on March first, and interviews with the interested candidates will be conducted. And that's going to be on March first, this Friday coming up is when we're going to conduct those interviews. On March sixth, the school board will hold a meeting for the purpose of appointment of the interim board member to represent District Two. So now I'm going to open the public hearing for the input for District Two appointee, and our first speaker is Linda Sobochek?
That's bad.
Okay, okay.
That's pretty good.
Thank you.
My name is Linda Sobochek, and I live at 107 Sheldon Court, Yorktown, Virginia, 23693. I'm here in support of your candidate Darlene Hines, and I just wanted to mention that Darlene is not here tonight because it's Grafton High School's winter sports banquet, and she is on the board of the Booster, the Athletic Booster, so she helps to run it, plus her children swim, so they'll be on her tonight. So she's sorry she could not be here, but duty calls. I'm a resident and a business owner in York County. I've been here for the past sixteen years. I have known Darlene Hines for eleven of the sixteen years that I've lived and worked here. I have two children, one graduated last year from Grafton High School and is a freshman at William &amp; Mary, and one is currently a junior at Grafton High School. My children have spent their entire school years in the York County School Division. I met Darlene when our kids were in first grade together. She had just taken over the spiritware chair job, and I was treasurer of the Coventry Elementary School PTA. We bonded through our love of volunteering our kids and getting involved. She being an engineer and me being an accountant, we also connected through our love of organization and numbers. I can't recommend Darlene Hines enough for the interim position of the school board. She has served on so many positions in the school's PTA for the past eleven years, it's incredible. From spiritware to treasurer to box tops chair to vice president and president. In addition to that, she's active in her church, involved in the community swim team, the Coventry Sailfish, running fundraising, being head scorekeeper, spiritware, pretty much anything anyone asks of her. Darlene is that go-to person that will help in any capacity. She served as treasurer of the York County PTA for two years. When her daughter was in Girl Scouts, she ran the entire cookie booth program for the York County Service Unit for four years. Her children are now at Grafton High School, so she's, as I mentioned, on the Athletic Booster Board there and helps the PTA in many areas. Darlene is a Coast Guard spouse and is active in those functions as well. She is that person that will always attend an open forum that the school board offers to hear what is going on in the community and in the school system, regardless if it has a direct effect on her children. She's that type of caring and interested person. You might ask, why didn't Darlene run when Cindy Kierski vacated her position in the last...or in the last election? As I mentioned, her husband is in the Coast Guard, he's an admiral, and as a result, he travels extensively and often works remotely in Washington, DC. As much as Darlene volunteers, she's the type not to take anything on unless she's absolutely sure she can be fully committed. And for a school board member, as you all know, she knew that she would be...had to be all in and commitment. As fate would have it, her husband recently announced his retirement effective June, so he and the Hines family are staying put in Yorktown, and so that gives Darlene the perfect opportunity to do something she feels a calling to, be an interim board member for the York County School Division. I promise, you will not find a person more capable and more ready for this challenge. Thank you so much for your time and attention.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. So next, we have Brett Higginbotham.
My name is Brett Higginbotham. I live at 111 Ivy Arch, Yorktown, Virginia, 23693. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Brett Higginbotham, and I would like to be considered for the interim vacant chair for the York County School Board. I'm invested in the local community and have lived in York County since I moved here in two thousand and five. My wife is a York County Schools graduate and a teacher with York County Schools, and my two children attend York County Schools. I'd like the opportunity to work alongside the teachers and administrators to serve the students of York County. I feel like I could bring a unique view to the school board because I'm an educator myself. I've taught in the middle and high school level in southwest Virginia, in Newport News, and I'm currently the band director at Picosean Middle School. I also earned my National Board Teaching License in two thousand and thirteen. In addition to my own class, I'm a highly sought-after guest director, clinician, and adjudicator throughout the state of Virginia. I'm the representative for the Band and Orchestra Directors in this district, which ranges from Williamsburg out to Gloucester and Matthews, and I represent us to the statewide organization, the Virginia Band and Orchestra Directors Association. I'm the choir and music director at Northampton Presbyterian Church in Hampton, Virginia, where I organize and direct the adult choir, praise team, and instrumental music. With these opportunities, I've had the chance to make many professional contacts, and I see how students work together and how they work with their teachers to learn in a unique setting. Getting to interact with these students and teachers collaboratively for a short period of time allows me to see the products the children are able to accomplish in a variety of environments where they are less inhibited and able to express their interests and talents outside of a traditional classroom. Even though I use music as my vehicle to educate, I've seen students grow and thrive in a variety of different learning intelligences. Because of these unique experiences, qualifications, and a student, teacher, and parent point of view that I would bring with me, I believe I would greatly compliment the York County School Board, and I hope for the opportunity to serve the York County School Division. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much, thank you. So next speaker we have is Martha Owens.
Good evening, I'm Martha Owens, 106 Lockmere Court, Yorktown, 23693. It's my pleasure and with highest regards tonight that I stand in front of you in support of Darlene Hines candidacy for the District Two position. I've had the pleasure of knowing Darlene, although as a career military spouse, we've had the fortune that for eleven years, she and her family have planted and involved themselves intimately in our community, both in our school system and, as stated earlier, in various other community activities. I've decided tonight to represent my talking points about Darlene with an acronym, ACTS, A-C-T-S, because when I think of Darlene Hines, she acts. With the A, I would like to accentuate that she is an asset in anything she has served in. She's incredibly approachable and incredibly accessible, that she really puts herself into whatever she's a part of. And C is she is a connected communicator. She really has a pulse for what is going on in our school systems, as she has very actively involved herself from the elementary level, middle school, and now where her two children are in the high school. She has done numerous leadership positions, from the most important job to the one that stays behind to make sure that everything is put back in order so that the next day school is ready to go. Then for T, I would think of her as a transformative team member. She is really connected and interested in the success of all students here in the York County School Division, and the support of all teachers, and everything she has been a part of. When I say the word transformative, she puts her hand to it, she gathers teams together or is a part of a team, and the transformation, she leaves every project, every committee, everything she's ever served on in a better position than it was. I have had the pleasure of being able to give her name to various people in the community at numerous schools. She sees no division in terms of our districts, and she is very happy to share anything that the wheel has been invented, and let me tell you, with her brilliant mind and exceeding energy, she's created many wheels, and she will very openly share that with anyone that asks. And lastly, I think of S as just being service-oriented. She is the heart of a servant, she has the courage of a lion, and the energy of just someone like that Energizer Bunny. And I just want you to know, if you have her on your team, that you are going to be ready for anything, because she is that committed to our community, and again, I could not give any greater recommendation, and know that including her on our school board would be an incredible asset, because Darlene acts. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. All right, our next speaker is Sophie Davis.
Good evening, I'm Sophie Davis, 205 Richter Lane, Yorktown, Virginia, 23692. Again, I'm Sophie Davis, good evening. I'm a resident of District Two. I have two sons, both currently at the Grafton Complex, one in ninth grade and one in seventh grade. They both also attended Coventry Elementary for kindergarten through fifth grade. I'm a past president of both the Coventry PTA and the York County Council PTA. I was beyond delighted when I saw Darlene Hines on the list of names to be considered for appointment...for appointment as our interim school board member, and I felt compelled to come tonight to voice my enthusiastic support for Darlene, as I can think of no one better suited for the position than she. First, she's a parent of two current Grafton High School students, who has sent her children through three District Two schools and been actively involved as a parent at all of them. Second, she put in eight years of tireless volunteer work on the Coventry PTA, much of it as treasurer, which can be close to a full-time unpaid job at the elementary level, where many of the programs they still run today wouldn't exist without her. She then moved on to the middle and high school PTAs, as well as the York County Council PTA, serving there as well. It will come as no surprise that she was not only the 2014 York County Council PTA Elementary Volunteer of the Year, but also for the entire Peninsula District PTA. And I'd still like to know who beat her out for state, because I can't imagine anyone stronger than her. I met Darlene in two thousand and nine, when my oldest started kindergarten at Coventry with her youngest, and had the pleasure of getting to know her as both a colleague and a friend, as we volunteered together. She always has the best interests of all the children and teachers at the schools at heart, and as a longtime resident of District Two is very familiar with our district and its needs. She is also active in our community outside of school, in her church, and with the Coventry Sailfish Swim Team, as well as a USA Swimming official. She will devote herself to the school board position, because she has and always will go above and beyond for our kids. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much for your comments. So our last speaker this evening for the interim board member to speak is Raven Gathers.
Good evening, my name is Raven Gathers, and I live at 101 Richard Run, Yorktown, Virginia, 23693. I submitted my name for your consideration for the vacant District Two role. I'm an alumna of the York County School Division, having attended Coventry Elementary, then TAB Intermediate, which is now TAB Middle, TAB High School for two years, then I graduated from Grafton High School, I was a part of their first graduating class. This school district helped form the foundation upon which I would become a community-oriented, lifelong learner, as well as an educator. I recently relocated to York County in 2018, after living in the Caribbean, where I served as an assistant professor at the American University of Antigua College of Medicine. Currently, I am a consultant for the same institution in their Department of Education Enhancement, where I work remotely from home. In this capacity, I serve as an academic advisor for aspiring physicians. In addition, I'm a candidate for a doctorate in education degree with an emphasis in higher ed administration in the College of William &amp; Mary School of Education. Given my higher education experience, I'm sure you're wondering, what in the world do I want to do with K through twelve schools? My interest in K through twelve education was ignited in an education policy graduate course. It was taught by former YCSD Superintendent Dr. Steve Staples. As a result of that course, I was ready to work in K through twelve education, and began applying to roles. My first role was a volunteer position as a member of the Multicultural Student Success Committee for the Williamsburg James City County Public Schools. Next, I served as an executive director of a small community nonprofit organization in Charlottesville, Virginia, called African-American Teaching Fellows. The mission of the organization was to recruit, support, develop, and retain a cadre of African-American teachers for the Charlottesville city schools, as well as the Albemarle County Public Schools. This role helped provide me with an opportunity to immerse myself in K through twelve education, build relationships with both public school districts, as well as community partners, and participate in various education-centric initiatives within the Charlottesville community. To be an asset to the school board, I believe that a board member must possess leadership experience, be fiscally responsible, student-centered, and believe that every student has the potential to succeed. Having served as an executive director of a nonprofit, as well in the private sector as a senior manager for the Walt Disney Company, both of these roles provide me with the opportunity to hone my leadership and budgeting skills. My student-centered orientation and fundamental belief that every student has the potential to succeed comes from my experience as a faculty member at the American University of Antigua, as well as an assistant professor at Hampton of Antigua, as well as an assistant professor at Hampton University and an adjunct at Old Dominion University. I noticed on the YCSD website that the school board and, and the, I'm sorry, and the staff are taking advantage of career readiness and workforce readiness initiatives with students, and I'd love to support the engaged, engaged database as well as the career investigations course for seventh and eighth graders. I look forward to the prospect of advocating for student learning and supporting innovative initiatives such as these on the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gathers. All right, so at this time, I'm going to close the public comment, public hearing for District Two appointee. So next, we're going to move into our matters by the board. So I'm going to start with you, Dr. George, matters of board members.
Given the hour, and I think Barbara has a few things she wants to say, I'm going to yield my time to Barbara. Have a wonderful evening.
Okay, Ms. Haywood.
Thank you. First of all, I just want to say thank you to all of you for the school board appreciation, cards, gifts. It's been wonderful. And I think when you sit here and we think about why we do this, we don't do it for the money, we don't do it for the fun, although it can be fun at times, but it's hard work. We do it because we enjoy making a difference in the community. So again, thank you for all the acknowledgements. Dr. David Rice spoke about, earlier, spoke about words and the importance of words. And he kind of gave me that opportunity to follow with the comments I want to share with you tonight. I want to share with you a few thoughts regarding happenings within the state over the last few weeks regarding the use and discussion of blackface. I've had the opportunity to talk with many individuals on this topic and responses have ranged from I understand to I've had no clue what it meant. On the heels of these occurrences, I've had the opportunity to attend the VEA Teacher of Color Summit at Norfolk State University, February 15th and 16th. Mrs. Bauer shared that information and it was a good conference, and Dr. Carroll was also there. The overall focus was recruiting and retaining teachers of color. While my schedule did not allow me to attend it in its entirety, I had the opportunity to hear a few keynote speakers. Leah Dozier-Walker is the Director of Equity and Community Engagement at the Virginia Department of Education. She leads statewide efforts aimed at advancing education equity, closing the achievement gap, and improving student outcomes. Her presentation title was "Virginia is for All Learners: Supporting Student Success and Student Quality Through an Equity Lens." Another keynote speaker was Dr. John Gordon III, who's Chief of Schools for the Chesterfield County Public Schools. His presentation centered on the perspective diverse educators in Virginia. He addressed the increasing innovation in our recruitment activities and strategies and the K-12 teacher of color shortage. I have been a member of this board for almost 30 years. Like many other families, we have had to deal with racial concerns as it pertained to all three of our sons. Our family addressed the issue head-on, which was, which occurred with other school divisions in the area, bringing attention to it and finding a resolution. I would like to thank that since our youngest son graduated from York County Public Schools in 2004, that we would not need to address this issue now. Within the last one to two school years, we have witnessed an increase in racial and ethnic concerns, whether it came from parents speaking to our board here at the meeting or concerns raised during student hearings. We are also witnessing the need for the first-ever Committee on Diversity as a result of concerns brought to the attendant, attention of the school board. We have previously prided ourselves in attempting to address concerns when the school division was made aware of these concerns. You have always heard me say and will continue to hear me say, I need you to share with me the good, the bad, and the ugly, so we may know how to address these challenges. We have experienced some bad situations which could become ugly unless we take a proactive, unified stance. I share all of this in order to offer each of you this challenge to my board members, to join with me in requesting that the superintendent schedule dialogue sessions, starting with our board down through school board office administrators, all the way down to the school level with teachers, custodians, transportation, all assets, all facets of our school division. If you are uncomfortable with my earlier comments or feel disturbed that I bring this topic up on a regular basis, then it is time, if not past time, to address this issue. In addition to open dialogue, I am requesting that professional development dollars be used to address this topic. We need to have roundtable discussions to address the ethnic and racial diversity and issues we are beginning to openly see in our schools. I believe that a proactive approach will identify and address any challenges we may have, thus being able to enhance and benefit our educational system. This dialogue, this dialogue may be uncomfortable, but it is needed. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Haywood, for this comment. All right, Mr. Medford.
I don't have anything this evening.
Okay. And in a matter of time, I'll keep it short, but thank you for the, for the gifts and the accolades for school board appreciation. I certainly enjoy what I do to give back to the community as well. So we're going to move on to our financial matters.
Yep, I'm going to be brief this evening. For January, our certification for planes were $4,274,406.80. There's a couple of significant expenditures for January I just want to bring to the attention because we're always updating systems and old things in our schools that have aged out. So shit communications, there's multiple expenditures for PA systems like at TAB Elementary, Mount Vernon, and Grafton Bethel, just replacing things that are starting to fail. You'll see an expense to R squared M squared Architects for that breezeway at Coventry Elementary, the gym security investable. You'll also see some renovation costs at Bethel Manor Elementary and also the Mount Vernon Elementary School breezeway, gym floor, and security upgrades. So those are some significant expenditures just to bring to your attention. On the operating budget with our expenditures, we're, we're a little, just slightly above what we were this time last year, but everything looks in order with the operating budget for this time of year. And for our food service, we're actually looking pretty good there. Our receipts are higher today, this, this past month on January than they were the same time last year. So that's, that's a positive for our, for our food service account because that's a self-funded account that we try to make sure it balances at the end of the year or have a surplus. There is a resolution before, that's 19-08. There's a couple of things I want to mention on this. One is just secondary and administrative bill of network switches of $500,000. There's a Microsoft licensee renewal for almost $340,000. And then you'll see a series of things that Mr. Sheerhart talked about with the additional HVAC replacements, Coventry Elementary, TAB Elementary, also cabling and network renovation at TAB, and the DARE Elementary repair and coat existing low-slope roof. That's a $500,000 estimated expenditure. But this one is exciting because I can't wait to see the finished product of this. And that's that Learning Commons A&amp;E and work to be done at York High School and the annex renovation and A&amp;E. So one, there's about almost $700,000 estimated in that, but it's going to be exciting to see when that's done. I've heard, I've heard things about it. I haven't actually seen what it actually is going to be, the final product, but it's one of the surprise things. I just can't wait to see how that turns out. I think the students at York High and other high schools are really going to enjoy that concept when it's up and the switch gets turned on. So with that, I move approval of financial matters.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Ford.
Yes. A motion was made by Mr. Medford and seconded by Dr. George to approve financial matters as listed. You may cast your votes.
Forgot about that.
And the motion has passed five to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. So next, we have the consent calendar. Are there anything that needs to be pulled from the consent calendar before I start? I know you had a couple of questions earlier that you had, were going to ask the superintendent. Did you get your answers on that?
I did.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So the list is approval of personnel actions, approval of donations in the amount of $2,052, consideration of approval of minutes from a work session on December 3, 2018, a joint special meeting work session on December 4, 2018, and a special meeting and regular meeting on December 17, 2018. Approval of Resolution 19-09, Resolution for the 2019 Virginia School Boards Association Business Honor Roll, approval of a motion to authorize the division superintendent to sell surplus vehicles to New Horizons Education Center, approval of a motion to authorize the division superintendent to sell surplus vehicles to the Pecosin City Public School Board, consideration of a motion to execute a waiver and hold harmless in agreement between the York County School Board and the York County, Virginia, and Yorktown Crescent, LLC. Approval to authorize the division superintendent to sell surplus equipment at public auction. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendars listed?
I'd like to move motion to approve consent as listed.
Second. All right, Ms. Ford.
A motion was made by Dr. George and seconded by Mr. Medford to approve the consent calendar as listed. You may cast your votes. And the motion did pass five to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. So next, we have our action items and approval of proclamation for Social Work Month, March 2019. So Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. In recognition of our school social workers and the tremendous work they do, we have four social workers in our school division that serve all 19 of our schools, Brandina Tobias, Sally McLean, Catherine Anthony, and I think it's Sheree Cotman. They do tremendous work for us. We appreciate and value all of the work our dedicated school social workers do on a daily basis as they provide support to our schools, students, and community.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Shandor. So is there a motion and a second to approve the proclamation for Social Work Month for March 2019? Move approval.
Second.
Ms. Ford.
Yes, a motion was made by Mr. Medford and seconded by Mrs. Haywood to approve the social work proclamation. You may cast your votes.
And Mr. Richardson, if I may say that we do truly appreciate all the work that they do because we know that our children come to school these days with so many issues than we have seen in the past. And all the work that they do is, is so needed and so thanked.
Thank you.
The motion did pass five to zero.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. So next, we have policy discussion. We have none. Policy first reading, we have none. Policy second reading, we do have an action on, and that's approval of school board policy DLC expense reimbursements to the expedited second reading. And Dr. Shandor, do you have information to share?
There were no changes since the work session.
Since we had that, okay. So is there a motion and a second to approve the second reading?
Move approval.
Second.
Ms. Ford.
Yes, a motion was made by Mrs. Haywood and seconded by Dr. George to approve the motion. You may cast your votes.
Not yet. There it is. It just came up.
The motion did pass five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. So now, we're going to move into the report of our superintendent, Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. But I'll be brief as well. Just wanted to say again, thank you for all that you do to support all of the students and staff in the school division, as well as the cabinet-level staff members, all of the directors. We certainly appreciate all of your support. Second, I did want to share that I've enjoyed having the opportunity to visit schools, to read to students in many, many classrooms. I do have a few hotspots that I hit typically every year, Ms. Bauer being one, and there's a few others who invite me back every year to read to students. So I would love to hear, again, more staff members, board members, et cetera, getting in to read to our kids for Read Across America. We also passed a VSBA Business Honor Roll Resolution earlier this evening in recognition of the educational partnerships between our community businesses and the York Foundation for Public Education. On behalf of the school division, I want to thank the foundation and local business owners for their continued support. Their support makes a significant difference in the lives of our students, teachers, and families. And the last thing I want to add is just to throw out a congratulations. We have a number of student athletes who've competed this, this season and a number of them had a very, really successful weekends. We had a number of swim teams that did outstanding individually and as teams. We had wrestlers do extremely well. We've had kids in indoor track break records. One of them was here tonight, Zach Coldsnow from TAB, who was the two-time shot put champion. We have a number of students who just exemplify excellence, not only in the classroom, but on the field. So certainly proud of all, all of their efforts. Congratulations to them. That concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Shandor. And now, as I stated earlier, the board will be meeting March 1st to conduct interviews and that'll be a closed personnel session, closed matter. And then, again, we'll meet on March 6th. That'll be open for the board to vote, to vote on an appointee for District Two. And then our work session will be held on March the 11th at 6:00 PM here in York Hall. So we're now in need of a closed session to talk about a personnel matter, so I need a motion for that.
I move that the York County School Board convene in closed session to discuss the appointment of individuals to the York County School Board of York County, Virginia pursuant to the personnel exemption at section 2.2-3711A1 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
Second.
Ms. Ford.
A motion was made by Dr. George and seconded by Mrs. Haywood for the York County School Board to meet in closed session to discuss an interim position for District Two. You may cast your vote. The motion passed five to zero. The board is now in closed session.
Thank you. This is adjourned, so we go into closed session. Thank you very much.
Good night.